Welcome you all to the City of Troy Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for July 17, 2012. Before we get started on the meeting, I'd like to read a prepared statement that just provides a summary of the process that we use. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by city council to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitions must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant granting of the variance. As far as procedures, the Board will hear the items in the order they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present, then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board to explain justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium and sign in on the sheet provided. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, i.e., next door neighbor, lived behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of the public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table, which means delay, the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the Board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. Before I move on with the agenda, I do want to make one comment. Under item number six under miscellaneous business, it came to my attention this morning that there was a desire to forego the use of a written document for signing purposes for discussions by petitioners or the public at large. I think that's worthy of discussion, and I'm going to bring that up under item six, miscellaneous business. I just wanted to bring that to your attention because I didn't have time to reach any of you this morning. And before I also go forward with the roll call, I'd like to ask, are there any additional changes to the agenda as written, either by staff or by the Board? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead with Agenda Item One, Roll Call. Mr. Evans, can you read the call to roll, please?
Mr. Bartnik?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Courtney?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Moving forward to Item Number Two, Approval of Minutes for the June 19, 2012 ZBA meeting. Are there any comments or suggestions regarding revisions of the minutes? Seeing none, is -- can I get them?
Move the approval.
Moved approval? Okay. Mr. Evans, could -- excuse me, sorry. Mr. -- how did I call you, Paul? I keep thinking I should call you Mr. Evans. Could you please call the roll on that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Moving on to Item Number Four, unless there's any additional comment, I don't believe so, for Item Three. It sounds like the agenda is fixed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to excuse myself on this particular issue. I have a conflict of interest.
Okay. No problem. Mr. Evans, I was wondering, did you happen to hear from our other alternate if he was going to be able to attend tonight?
Mr. Keltounis did indicate he would be here. I have not heard that he wasn't going to be here.
Okay.
In the instance that we would like to proceed, we would leave it to the applicant's option if they would like to proceed with six seating members as opposed to wait when there's a full board.
Okay. Could the --
Chairman?
Sir? Yes, Mr. Bartnik?
Mr. Chairman, should we maybe recess for five minutes and put in a telephone call to Mr. Keltounis to see if he's on his way or can appear?
That's fine, as long as we have ability to do that. Do you have a phone number he could reach, Mr. Evans?
Let me double check right now.
Okay. Mr. Bartnik, in the meantime, I think what I'd like to do is communicate to them just simply
Yes, sir.
-- of the old standard procedures we would use, because if he's unable to make it, I guess we'd fall into leaving that discretion to them, such as we used to do when we didn't have alternates.
Right.
Excuse me, sir and ma'am. Could one of you come forward? I'd like to explain to you how we would proceed if we don't have a full board.
Okay.
If you could, could you come up to the podium? Thank you. I apologize for this, and I'm sure it's only going to be a few minutes delay. I'm sure maybe you're running late with traffic or whatnot.
No, as I understand.
But in the old days, let's say, less than a year ago, we used to have no alternates. And when that happened, and we had less than a full board, instead of seven voting members, let's say we had six like we have now, or fewer, we would always leave the option up to you to delay discussion of the matter to a meeting when we would have a full board. And if that was to happen tonight, we'd naturally extend that option to you. The downside to proceeding if we have less than a full board is that whatever decision gets rendered, let's say, for example, you're not happy with it, my understanding is there's not essentially a do-over, per se, that you could say, well, now that we have seven members, I'd like to go forward. I guess you could reapply and such, but some people don't like to roll the dice, so to speak. So it is your option, and I'm certain that if we can reach Mr. Keltounis, we'll be able to do so. But if we're not, what we have to do is give that option to you, and you don't have to answer now, we're going to try to reach him, you have a few minutes to think it over. But right now, we'd have six people voting instead of seven because of Mr. Stratt's concern over conflict of interest, which we respect. I'm not going to ask him to discuss why, but with him being absent, you know, we don't have a full board. I don't know if you have any comments?
Thank you, Dan. Thank you for giving us that option. I think -- I feel positive about this, and I've been living in the City of Troy, so I don't mind going ahead with the six if I have to, the six Board members.
Okay. From a procedural point of view, we're still going to try to reach Mr. Keltounis --
Thank you.
-- because it's better operationally for us to have a full board, but thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of order. Our Board, through the city, publishes the meeting date and time, and you've called the meeting to order, and we are in session. And there is no provision within our procedures to do a recess or to reach out to a member to see if they're coming, although that might be a nice thing to do. But the fact of the matter is, I mean, this sets a dangerous precedent. If, you know, are we going to recess for five minutes to allow someone to attend? Well, we can function, and of course, it's the applicant's decision if they want to go forward or not. That's where, you know, it's on their shoulders. We are able to function as a Board, and the city attorney could probably address this, but I think it's a slippery slope over time. So what happens, you know, in a future meeting, or even tonight, where, you know, we're going to recess for five minutes trying to reach somebody, and then, well, yeah, I can be there in 15 minutes? Well, now, we're delaying the official proceedings of an official committee, which has judicial power here in the City of Troy. Secondly, our city staff that supports us for these hearings is, you know, their time is infringed upon, but everyone's time is infringed upon. And so, I mean, I don't see anything in our provision, in our procedures, that would allow for us to basically say we have to stop. And the point is, we're hoping that the alternate
Right.
-- gets here, and that's all good and dandy. But I think, you know, it is a dangerous slippery slope, I think, for the future. I mean, you know, once again, we have published the time for the meeting and all the members, and if the alternate indicated he could be here tonight, you know, maybe something unfortunately happened to him, but, you know, we need to, I think, move on.
Okay. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate them, too, as far as the slippery slope aspect of setting a precedent. My only comment before I also entertain, I think Mr. Courtney has a comment, is turning the city staff and looking at just rules of procedure that we normally follow, and whether or not there's anything specific in the zoning code that I'm not aware of. Is there an opinion or thought, Mr. Motzni, on this matter that you would like to chime in on?
There's no provision that would prevent this Board from taking a short recess at the discretion of the Chair. Whether that establishes a precedent, that is an argument that could be made. Well, we did it for someone else, now we have to do it for everybody. That's true. So, Mr. Clark, has a good point, but there's nothing that would prohibit you as a Chair from declaring a short recess.
Okay. I understand. Mr. Courtney, do you have a comment?
Yes. We keep -- I keep hearing that the petitioner has the right to delay it. He has the right to ask us to delay it. We have the right to deny him that right. He doesn't have a right. It's something that we usually do, but
No, I agree with what you're saying.
Not a requirement.
Your reading of it is true, and I -- my comments is one in which, over the couple of
That's what we usually do.
Right. We're always very accommodating, so it just kind of falls into the standard mode of operation. But you are right. You are correct. I'm sorry, was there a comment on this side?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to that point, is -- has created a precedent over time, is my point.
Yeah.
That the petitioner has the ability to ask the Board, I shouldn't say the right, the ability to ask the Board, and since we have done it in the past, then the precedent has been set. And I'm just saying that, you know, basically not moving forward because someone's not present, even though we have all the ability to make an informed decision here tonight, perhaps, you know, depending on the majority of the Board, I just think that we should move forward.
Well, I appreciate your opinion, Mr. Clark, and your input, and also yours, Mr. Courtney. I think we've gone beyond five minutes for a recess anyway, and the petitioner seems to have an interest and desire in moving forward, so I see no reason in not moving forward at this point. At this point, Agenda Item Four, which is your case, before we hear any comments that you would like to make, what we have normally is that Mr. Evans gives kind of an outline
-- I can go and sit if you want.
-- or you may feel the standard. It's up to you.
I don't mind, yeah. Absolutely.
Actually, is that -- I do believe
Is that next?
We're going to pause for one moment. Is that?
I think it is. I think it is.
No. Okay.
Thought it was him.
Is that Mr. Keltounis?
May I leave to
That's what I was wondering.
I thought it was Mr. Keltounis.
That's what I thought that was, Mr. Keltounis.
I'll -- Welcome, Mr. Keltounis.
How are you, sir?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, I think the proper procedure would be for you to call him forward officially.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I can put it out there.
Mr. Keltounis, welcome.
I'm sorry.
No, no problem at all. We were having a procedural discussion, which I think was worthwhile for the future, and in this particular case, it just happened to work out in our favor. I'd like to say at this point that our alternate member, Mr. Keltounis' president, I'd also like to say that Mr. Bloomingdale is also present, because Mr. Lambert is out this week, and he is one of the other Board members. So actually, our Board is made up of seven, sir, and it's made up of two of the alternates.
Okay.
We have five members and two alternates.
Okay. Thank you.
So, anyway, we do have a full Board, as it works out. So, moving back onward, and again, I do appreciate the input that was given, I'd like to see if Mr. Clark could give us a kind of a summary of the request.
Mr. Evans, you mean?
I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Unless you'd like to do it, Mr. Clark.
Those five-letter last names, they all sound alike.
Thank you.
This property is located on the east side of Livernoy Road, just south of Long Lake. The property in question is located at 4820 Livernoy Road. It is zoned single-family residential and currently used that way. The surrounding properties on the overhead, in yellow, are also zoned the same way. The property in the overhead is outlined in red. The applicant's request is, in order to split the parcel into three separate parcels, he's requesting a two-foot variance from the requirement that the parcels be at least 100 feet wide. Now, in this survey here, the applicant shows the three parcels that he desires, and the red circles indicate, the figure inside the red circles indicate the lot width that would result if he is granted his variance. Each parcel will be at least 98 feet wide, and if he's successful tonight, he will get three parcels that are just that size.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Courtney, do you have a comment?
Yeah. Question for the staff is, is this the same request that he presented before, or is there change in it?
There are changes. This is not the same request.
Okay. What?
Sir, at this time, if there's any additional information you would like to present to us, you're free to do so.
Sure. First of all, myself, my name is Ashish Manik. My wife, Meenal Gada.
Hello.
Hello. We thank you, thank both, and the city staff for guiding City of Troy in a positive note and help the city grow. We've been resident of City of Troy for the last five years and four, more than five years and four months now. We like it, we love it, and we plan to stay here. We went through this lot. This lot has a unique shape. It's a pie-shaped lot, and we plan to have three lots, as mentioned, and we, as per our survey, as per the survey by the consultant, we see that these lots can be divided 98.22 each width with the variance, which front setback requirement of 100, what is required by city. This lot meets and exceeds the acreage requirement, because on an average, an R1B is required, 15,000 square feet is required by City of Troy. We have 20,000 square feet. Because of hardship of the way the lot was, and it's been for a long time, it has, the back width of the lot is much, it meets the requirement, but there is no access to that side. So that's why, on the front side, that's where we won't request the variance. We feel that this is going to help City of Troy, this is going to help City of Troy grow and have more neighbors and revenue to the City of Troy. So we appreciate your help and guide us, how can we move forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Courtney?
Directly behind you, there are two lots in the same space.
Yes.
Why do you not look toward two lots instead of three?
Those lots were, those property were developed more than 40 years ago, and at that time, the requirement was, depending on the sewer and other acreage requirement, you know, the city did not have. So that's, we feel that, that's why we are going for three right now, to meet the city code.
But you need a variance.
I need a variance, yes, absolutely, sir.
With two lots, you wouldn't need a variance.
Two lots, I won't need a variance, yes, but then, with the way the economy is, I think, you know, City of Troy has a great school, and it gives opportunity to get more revenue, and to me, more neighbors.
They are ranch lots, I think. In our back are ranch homes.
Yeah. Yep. But two. But two, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you. In looking at this drawing, the only thing you need is that, just under two feet --
Yes.
-- for each, all of the other setbacks are laid out on the drawing, correct?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And those setbacks, from your understanding, you've been told that they comply with the requirements of the zoning district?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions by the Board? I do have a couple of questions.
Sure, please.
And I apologize if it's in here and I missed it, but the actual dimensions of the homes, as far as square footage, I know there's a graphical description or presentation of the colonial homes. Can you tell me what the square footage is of?
Oh.
The size of the homes that you're looking at putting in?
Oh, I don't, I don't plan to put a, I'm going to build one for myself, and I don't plan to build one for myself more than 4,500 square feet. I know that. It's, I am a small family of three, but I, we have visitors coming to our house in the good friend circle, so, so maybe a four, somewhere around 4,000 square feet, but not more than 4,500, as of what I know right now, yes.
Do you foresee that what you're going to build, you won't be coming back for another variance?
I feel, I feel very confident on it. I've been, I've been living in five years in City of Troy, and with the lot size it is, it is a great, a great buildable lot, and I think it meets major requirement, because I've seen the City of Troy, people going with much smaller lot, or builders going much smaller lot. But no, I felt that, you know, it was good to just stay at where we are and go from there and believe in that. But, sorry, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. No, no, I appreciate that. I was just looking at a document, and I don't have any additional questions. I do have for some staff, but that'll be something I'll ask shortly. Is there, before I let the applicant return to their seats, is there any additional questions from the Board? No?
Yeah, just
Mr. Courtney?
Do you have any idea how that compares in size of the other houses right around?
Absolutely, sir. If you, I had, what I did, I put a survey in, I don't know the page number, but what I did is, I went last 20 years and saw, did the list of, it's part of the package on page number nine, I believe, is that of all the houses that are built from 1990 onwards to 2004, that's been near, in the nearby area, and all of them are like 17,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet lots, and our lot's average comes to 20,000.
The size of the house?
Oh, size of the house, yes. It is, it varies from 200 square, 2,000 square feet to 40, 400 square feet, or 4,500.
And you plan to build at the high end?
I plan to build myself around 4,050, myself. That's I'm thinking of right now, but somewhere around, I don't expect myself to grow on, as far as my requirement, more than 4,500 square feet, no.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Before I let them return to their seats, is there any other questions from the Board at this time? No? All right. What we're going to do is, we're going to bring this back to discussion with the Board and Staff. It is possible that there may be additional questions for you coming out of that discussion, so we may recall you, but at this time, if you could take a seat in the gallery.
Absolutely.
We'll bring it back.
Thank you very much for your help. I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you. Seeing that there's no one here to speak on this matter from the public, the public hearing essentially is closed, I do not have any documentation for or against this matter. I want to check with you, Mr. Evans, has there been anything received since you've sent our packets out?
We have not received anything.
Okay. But we are confident that all the mailings were out?
Oh, yes.
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 Okay. Well, at this time, I'm going to bring it back before the Board, and I'm going to open it up for discussion with the Board and also with Staff as needed. Is there any discussion with this matter at the Board level? Mr. Bartnik?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion at this time to approve the variance as requested. It is a very unique piece of land. The homeowner or the property owner is entitled to make a decision whether it's two or three parcels. It's a very modest variance in terms of the width relative to the overall size of the buildable land on that, each one of those three resulting properties, as well as the depth of the properties. This unique piece of property, the three of them, I think meets all the requirements under the code, under the ordinance. I move to approve the variance request.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Courtney, were you going to second, or were you going, do you have a question?
I was going to second, but it's, okay.
Okay.
I got to get my feet wet.
No problem, sir.
And I'd like to ask a question of Staff.
Feel free.
In the packet I have, there's a, some comments from the assessing department, and I'd like to confirm that the way I'm reading it is that this is doable. There's a procedure for it. If we give him a variance tonight for the first parcel, split off one part of it, then he can build a home on that, and then to get the second one, he has to demolish the existing home and then come back for a variance for the split between the second and third lot. Is that correct?
Partially. The variance is good for a year.
Okay.
So in effect, if he processes the one lot, builds a home on it, moves into it, demolishes the house, and gets all that done, he could apply for the second split through assessing within a year. If not, he could come back here and ask for an extension.
Mr. Evans, a question of guidance. I have, I have a motion that's been put forth to approve. I have a second. At this point, it'd be proper to have a discussion on the
Motion.
merits of the motion. I do have some questions actually for you that actually don't necessarily pertain to the motion, but the motion got in front of my own questions, so I'm not certain if I'm out of order. I'm not, I want to make sure I follow, being green, I want to make sure I follow properly.
You know, I think if we can acknowledge that there's a motion and a second on the floor, I guess if it's okay with the Board and you just have questions on, you know, factual matters.
Yes, they're factual matters, more of the land.
I don't see how that would affect, because we're still going to have the opportunity to deliberate if we need to before we vote.
Right. Okay. Unless there's any objection, before we enter discussion of the motion, I do have a couple of questions that I would like to get some assistance with on, from Staff. One question relative, and it goes back to the email that was dated June 29. There's a comment that says, please see attached particularly page three. I want to make sure I understand what page three was. Can you, can you point me to that? Because when the package is all assembled, I think I'm losing.
Oh, page three was the survey.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're referring to my message to
Yeah.
-- the assessing department, where it says, please see attached page three. That was the survey.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. The next question I have is, when you look at the original plating of the land, especially with the adjoining subdivision, was that, those parcel lines drawn as part of the development of the east adjoining subdivision?
Let me refresh my memory. I can look it up on the GIS.
And I apologize, I probably should have put that question for general knowledge before the meeting, but
Well, if things go the way I want it to go, we can answer that for everybody on the overhead. You know, according to the GIS, it does indicate it's part of Belzer Sub Number One.
With the documentation, next question I have for you, is the documentation that you have access to, would that have always shown that it's been one lot, or was that two lots that were joined?
One lot or two lots?
In other words, was the address 4820 at one time, two lots, similar to what you see east at 4845, 4781, and somewhere in the history, the parcels were joined and the plat maps were, plat map revised?
I have not seen any indication ever that those were, 4820 was two lots like the ones behind it.
Okay. And then, a general information question for me, is I don't know much about traffic flow, is that we have a major road there in which we have 285 feet or so of land encompassing the three lots, if this is approved, in which we'll have three driveways. Is there any consideration we have to need about entrance, egress and ingress, and dimensional issues as far as being a number of driveways close on a major furor fair that...
Well, I can say that the city engineering department has some standards, but if the board does believe that that may be a concern relative to this request and the variance, they could deliberate and consider that.
And then I have one, maybe two questions for Mr. Matzni. I'm sorry, I keep messing up your name a little bit.
Matzni.
And it really goes to the definition of a hardship. And I keep getting caught up with item D, that says that the characteristics which make compliance with dimensional requirements difficult must not have been created by the current or the previous owner. I could see where you could definitely split this parcel and build two homes, and we wouldn't even be having any discussion. But by making it into three lots, even though the parcel's not truly rectangular or square, I don't know, I recall them pie-shaped, but the difficulty becomes, even though it's a small couple of feet, it's created by the landowner. And in many ways, it'd be very easy for me to get comfortable with this, but I guess my comments is to this matter is... Well, my question to you is, what we're being asked to do, are we in essence approving a hardship that's created?
Generally, a self-created hardship is usually something where somebody has deliberately built a structure, creating its own practical difficulty. This is a dimensional variance, you don't have to prove a hardship, you have to prove practical difficulty. My opinion, unless they did something intentionally to these particular applicants to cause the land division in its present effect, I would not believe that was a self-created hardship.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was the only, thank you for, I appreciate the board letting me ask my questions. At this point, first, are there any additional questions for staff? Mr. Bartnik?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Relative to page 13, I think, the survey, I have a question about that.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, these three lots are 1.487 acres altogether, is that the correct reading of that survey? I'm sorry, this lot right now is 1.487 acres.
That's how I would read it. Let me check a separate legal description that we have on file, and see if we can...
Mr. Evans, if you'd like, I could bring the petitioner up, he may be able to confirm that, if that's easier, just quicker for you, than, you know, relying on the computer to think.
Yeah, I'm watching a Hourglass, maybe it'll be quicker.
Yeah, no problem. Excuse me, sir, could you come forward, please? Yes, to help resolve a question, we were wondering, can you confirm that your land in total is 1.487 acres? On the survey, it seems to indicate that that's the total acres.
Yes, yes, sir, that is true, that is true, yes.
And then, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Bartnik, if you have additional questions, I can, I can bring him forward, I know we have a motion, and we can table it, but in the interest of getting the information up here...
I guess I was going to be asking questions, instead I'll just make statements, and maybe you can disagree with me, but this is the way I see it. I think the reasonable difficulty, and under paragraph D that you were talking about, is certainly not self-created. What you have here is a one and a half acre, literally a one and a half acre parcel of property, he wants to divide it up into three acres, I'm sorry, three parcels to put up three houses. Each one of those lots is going to be just under a half an acre. Anywhere else in the city, or certainly in this district, that would be a no-brainer, it would not require a variance. The only reason why he's here for such a large three pieces of property is that on one angle, not even at the back angle, but at the front angle on the west side, he's off by 1.8 feet on each one of those proposed lots. On the back, he's got over 100 feet on the back of each one of those lots, and each one of the lots are over 200, 200 feet deep. And according to the surveyor, there's still 20,000 square feet of buildable, that's the only question, I don't know if it's 20,000 square feet is the total land size or the total building size, but certainly the surveyor's already drawn in the setbacks, and there's plenty of room there to build a house of the size that the petitioner is talking about or speculated. I mean, the only reason why there's a practical difficulty is here is because of the size of the lot, and that lot was set up back in, several decades ago, so I don't, I feel very comfortable approving this proposed lot split.
No, I appreciate the input, and I read the drawing the same way, that footprint, like, for example, the northern lot, 20,403 square feet is what you can build on with the set of sides. I just wanted to make sure that I was applying the rules correctly, and hence my question, but no, I mean, I see this work, so I just wanted to make sure I understood it fully. Mr. Courtney?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments. I'm, like I say, the parcels to the east, there are two. I see no reason why this shouldn't be developed two. The develop, the person has come in, bought the property, and is going to split off one parcel to build on. If he makes enough money on that, he'll then split the others. Actually, I'm very much opposed to it, except for one little problem, and as Mr. Bartnik pointed out, we're talking two feet, so I'm going to have to vote in favor of this, even though I'm very edgy on it.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Is there any additional comments in general before we enter into a discussion on the motion that's sitting before the board? Mr. Keltounis?
Yeah, what is he going to do with the existing buildings? I see some buildings here in the picture.
It's my understanding that they'll be demolished.
They're going to demolish, now.
As part of the, yes.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Evans, am I correct in that?
Well, essentially, if he's granted his variance tonight, the city can only process one of the lot splits, because if we process all the lot splits, the property line's going to go right through the existing house, so we'll process one at the southern end. If he can remove the house that's on the property now, we can process the other two. So I would opine in a worst-case scenario, if we split the one and things don't go the way he wants it to go, we're going to end up with a, potentially end up with a lot at the south end of 98.22 feet wide, and a remaining parcel at the north end that's double that size.
Is that your question, Mr. Keltounis?
Yeah, what I'm worried about, if he go ahead and build the first parcel, in the future, might end up too close with the existing building, you know, or something like that. I can see that, right here in the picture, that's why, that's why I bring my question, be too close, you know.
Is that a question you're asking?
No. That was my concern.
Okay. All right. Moving forward to the discussion of the motion, which is a motion to approve the applicant's request, is there any discussion for or against? The only, I would like to make a comment on this matter, is that when I look at the overall placement of size of dwellings on the adjoining subdivision that it's part of, and I look also at aerial photography of other properties along Livery Avenue, of a residential nature, my gut feeling is that this works as two lots, but it seems to be an increase in density with three. However, I think some of the board members, in particular Mr. Bartnik, you bring up a very good point, that in every other way it works, it's up for a minor variance, and it is in part due to the, an odd nature of the northern part of the site. Overall, I'm, I would end up voting in favor of it because of it, but I still have some reservations, and that's just merely my, my opinion, and that's the only comment I'm going to make regarding the motion as it lies. Is there any additional comments or discussion on the matter before I ask for a roll call on the motion? Mr. Evans?
Just a factual clarification based on some of the comments I've heard tonight. The minimum lot area for parcels in this district is 15,000 square feet. His drawing, his survey is showing that each parcel, not buildable area, but each parcel is over 20,000 square feet, and the dash line that we, or the dash box that we see inside every one of the proposed parcels, he's got callouts indicating correct setbacks for that zone, with the exception of the front setback, I believe the front setback is required to be 50 feet back, but nonetheless, he's, he's shown that inside those dash boxes, the ordinance does stipulate minimum setbacks, and he's demonstrated that he can meet those.
Right, and I appreciate you putting that in the record, it's definitely, it works in every way, that's why, that's why in the end, for example, I would vote to support approval. On some other matters, I just have some reservations, but again, it works, so I think he, you know, from my own perspective, is, he's entitled to the variance, so, but thank you for putting that in the record. Any other questions, comments, before we call the roll? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, would you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Keltounis?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
You have your variance approved, you'll be able to go forward with it, and we wish you the best of luck. No, you can stay to the end, the bitter end of the meeting if you'd like, or you, you're free to go, it's up to you. Yes, you can, but please come to the mic.
Myself, my family, we really, really thank you. Thanks, Paul, for your help, and Mr. Brent has also been a great, good help to us, guiding us, and you guys have given us an opportunity to do what we think is good, and we are going to give our best shot to make sure that we try to get some good neighbors and a good citizens back to the city of Troy. Thank you, sir, appreciate your help, have a nice day.
No problem.
Good luck.
Good luck to you, sir. I think Mr. Stratt may have left, if he is here, I would ask him that he be able to return to his seat, but I'm not sure where he might be.
You might be able to see him if they...
Yes, thank you. Mr. Keltounis, do you know if he's outside in the lot?
He's right there, he is.
Oh, okay, all right. We'll pause for a moment while Mr. Stratt returns. Thank you for your assistance, Mr. Keltounis. Hello, Mr. Stratt? Moving forward with item five, communications, I have no communications. Paul, is there anything that we aren't aware of since the package came out?
No.
No, okay. Under miscellaneous business, item number six, I did receive a request to make an amendment regarding how we document individuals who are speaking before the board. Since we have the meetings taped, videotaped, and that the individuals are required to give their name and address when they speak, there was a request from staff to eliminate the signatory form. And I think it'd be best to discuss this particular item. If, and Mr. Evans, if I'm missing what, what the request was in some manner, please clarify. And I'd also ask, is there any additional information you'd like to provide?
No, we end up, because we videotape everything, and we have condensed written minutes now, when they do sign in, we don't use them.
Right.
It's not clear to me what purpose they serve now.
Mr. Courtney?
You don't worry about spelling anymore since it's on the video?
Right, and we don't put their name in the minutes, and certainly for the record, you're going to ask them to...
That's the only reason to sign in was for the, for the minutes they had spelling.
Right, right.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Are there any additional comments on the matter?
Yes, I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stratt?
I could, along those same lines, last Tuesday, I had an item on the agenda for another municipality, well, actually, it was Bloomfield Township ZVA.
Do you mean at the planning commission, or...?
No, it was my work.
Oh, okay, okay.
As myself, so I, I noticed there were, it was very professionally done, I was impressed with their professionalism. There was about 20 items that was on the agenda, you believe that? But their regulations are extremely tight, they also regulate where the location of the condenser, your AC condenser is located in your house, and they dictate that, make sure that it's screened against neighbors, et cetera, so there were a lot of items such as that. But one of the interesting things that I saw was that unless there was a negative response by verbiage, when they asked for a vote, they did not go with a roll call vote, it was all verbal, and it really expedited everything, really, you know, they did it fast, and they did everything very, very efficient, very professional. There were issues that there was a descending vote, and then they had a roll call on it. They also asked a descending vote, you know, what his rationale was, it was on tape, it was fine. But again, you know, I'm just echoing my experience, and I strongly recommend, strongly recommend that if everybody has a chance to go and visit other municipalities and see how we can improve our area, because I think we are vastly improved, I'm very proud of, you know, our ZVA here, I think you've done an excellent job, and I think it's very nicely done, but there's room for improvement. I mean, we can improve ourselves, and just like the issue that you're talking about, whether or not we need a signature there, I think that's a good point, I agree, I don't think it needs to be, because it is on tape. But I think we need to really, although, you know, we don't have that many issues right now, but later on, we probably will, because I think that the city is built up to the point, we are built up to almost 90, 98 percent, and everything that we have that's coming before us are problem sites, and problem conditions, and where they're going to be coming before us at the ZVA level, because there is that, that condition. So I think we have to really try to expedite and be as efficient as possible, as well as be as professional, and I think we are very professional, though, I agree. Can I get off my soapbox now?
If you need a bigger box, yeah, your information's very good, I appreciate it, but, and I, actually, I want to return to one item, but I want to close out the issue... And actually, I want to return to one item, but I want to close out the issue about the signatory form. My initial thought on the matter was that this is a good idea, but I also thought I'm not going to be making that decision myself, so I want to make sure we all had some input. Is there any dissenting opinion on getting rid of the signatory form? I guess that's a question I would ask. We may be all missing the obvious, and if one of you feel differently, please point it out. If not, I guess from a procedural point of view, and I guess it may call to precedent or whatnot, I think moving forward, Mr. Evans, I think we can do away with it.
Good enough.
After this meeting. And another item that did come up, and is relative to just, and I think it was a good one, but I do want to touch on it, the issue of contacting a board member. I know other chairman can make an adjustment perhaps in the future, and I think just moving the meeting along and echoing, I think, Mr. Stratt's comments about keeping it as quick and professional as possible, it's probably best not to do that. And so, in the future, I, while I think it's meant to help the applicant, I think it's probably best for us just to move right on forward and let the applicant know the situation, but also indicate that it's really up to us whether or not we want to hear the case. That's at least, unless someone can, and you can bring it up later at another meeting if you want time to think about it, but that's going to be the mode that I'm going to operate on, at least while I have this privilege. Is there any additional miscellaneous business that's come up that isn't on the agenda we weren't aware of? If not, I'm going to close item number six. Item number seven, public comment, there's no public before us, so item number seven is closed, and we move on to item eight, which is adjournment. And I'd like to close the meeting. Thank you.